The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, nineteen present.
Quarant being present, I ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who is able to rise to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We'll spend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar. Intend a second, second about Alderman from the twenty... Alderman from the twenty-fifth, like to approach the dais.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is indeed my pleasure this morning to welcome some members of the Gateway Men's Chorus. This morning, they're going to do a few songs for us and then I'd like to present a resolution. So, gentlemen.
I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the trees are twisted and children listen to the sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, with every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright and may all your Christmases be white. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. We want some Mickey pudding, we want some Mickey pudding, we want some Mickey puddings to bring up a cheer. We won't go until we get some, we won't go until we get some, we won't go until we get some, so bring it right here. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Thank you very much, guys. If you wouldn't mind coming up here on the dais and I'm gonna also welcome up Lawrence Miskel, who's the current board chair president, or current board chair for the organization. I would like to present a resolution to the Gateway Men's Chorus this morning because they are entering into their twenty-fifth anniversary season and they are actually going to start celebrating that tonight at the Edison Theater at Washington University with a concert that begins at eight o'clock. So if any of you all are able to attend, this is just a small sample of the talent that this organization has. And, you know, over the last twenty-five years, they've made a huge impact in our community. And so, without further ado, I'll get into the resolution here. The resolution is, like I said, commemorating the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Gateway Men's Chorus and it goes as such. Whereas the Gateway Men's Chorus is celebrating its twenty-fifth anniversary of performing for the St. Louis metropolitan area and whereas the chorus continues their tradition and strong commitment to outreach with performances that touch new audiences and to benefit causes which are important to the community and whereas the Gateway Men's Chorus values the exploration of innovative ideas and programming that appeal to a wide array of the public and whereas the chorus celebrates diversity within their membership and community, promoting that together we become more than each one of us alone and whereas they open ears that would otherwise be closed to their message and whereas they proclaim to the world that a voice like theirs can never be silenced and whereas the Gateway Men's Chorus has demonstrated commercial success with our concert attendance and production of four CDs and whereas the Gateway Men's Chorus affirms and promotes gay culture and acceptance through excellence in musical performance and education. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Gateway Men's Chorus and we wish them continued success and achievement and we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare commemorative copy to that end that it may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. So, I personally am affiliated with this organization. I serve on their board as well. I do so because I do believe very strongly in their mission and their capacity to open hearts and change minds. They are a fantastic organization and a really wonderful group of guys that, you know, is very much committed not only to raising awareness in terms of the LGBT community in the St. Louis city area but they also go across the country spreading a message of love and hope and peace to everyone. And so, just trying to accomplish that mission is no small feat and I would like to recognize their twenty-five years of success in doing so. Thank you. I don't know if you wanna say a few words?
If you have time tonight or tomorrow night, we're playing, we're gonna be singing at the Edison Theater at Wash U's campus, so please come, there's seats available, eight o'clock.
Thank you.
I also would like to say a special thanks to the Gateway Men's Chorus. You guys are amazing. I know you heard me in the background when you started singing, I was saying, wow, wow, wow. I think I was knocking them off tune a little bit, according to Alderman Moore, but that was a real treat and we welcome you back next year to commemorate Christmas again with us next year. But thanks again, you guys, it was amazing. I think there are a couple other people out here who had some comments, saw Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Florida, anything. But again, thanks again for coming down. Let's give them one more round of applause, that was beautiful. Resolution number two seventy-five for Beth Davis. Could I have Miss Davis and your team, could you join me to sit at the dais? Alderman from the first ward, you wanna join? A lot of you, you know, a lot of you hear Clear Channel, you hear about all of the great things they do throughout our community, you tune into their radio stations, you hear some of the voices, you know, over the radio but you very rarely get an opportunity to see them and rarely get an opportunity to thank them. So I'm really honored today to thank Beth Davis and her team and I'm gonna give her an opportunity to introduce her team, just a couple of the members of her team that makes the magic happen each and every day for us over the airways. They are phenomenal. I don't know if you had an opportunity to hear about or to see or read about the Sister Strut. It was an amazing journey. You take a look, I think it's the second year for the Sister Strut, second year and the numbers grew like crazy. I'm not gonna steal Beth's thunder so I'm gonna let her cover all the numbers and a little bit of Sister Strut with you, but it was awesome. It was an awesome, awesome event. I also wanna thank Alderman Troop for working to help bring Miss Davis and her team here this morning to congratulate and thank them on behalf of residents all across our city promoting health care and health awareness in women all across our region. All right, Troop said he's gonna give it to Beth Davis and then we're gonna bring Troop up after. So, join me in welcoming Miss Davis to the microphone, the leader of Clear Channel.
Thank you, thank you very much. I wanna introduce part of my team that makes this happen. Derek Martin is our general sales manager for KMJM, Magic 104.9 and Katz, Allure 1600. And our marketing director as well as our community affairs director, Erica Parr. I would like to highlight Sister Strut. Sister Strut happened because Derek and I had worked together in the past and he brought to my attention that another major market, Detroit, they had done an event called Sister Strut which was to call attention to health awareness for women of color. Wasn't doing so well in Detroit and we decided we were going to outdo them and we knew that St. Louis could do it and we knew the need for health awareness here in St. Louis. So, we put our mind to making it happen. The first year, we had nearly three thousand walkers. Second year, we had over six thousand. So, we know that the community, we know that the community wants this and they recognize that this breast cancer awareness walk for women of color is something that's needed in the community and that they embrace. I wanna thank each of you because you help support our business and we wanna support your business as evidenced by the American Express Small Business Initiative which was done the Saturday after Thanksgiving because we recognize that while there are big companies that help drive our region as well and our city as well, many small companies are really the heart of what we are. And so, we began our small business initiative with that and what we would like to do in the future and we will provide more information for you in the future is to support each one of your districts with a small business initiative which we were going to kick off in first quarter of 2012. And you'll discover more about that, but it is our effort in serving our community and bringing more people to small businesses to shop as well as growing our economic situation here in St. Louis because we know the need of that. It's our home, it's your home and we want to continue doing that. Again, thank you so much.
Well, Beth, Erica and all you, we can't thank you enough like we said earlier. I don't know, Troop, do you wanna say anything else? Troop? This is good, so just everybody out there know what it takes to get Troop nervous to get to the mic as a radio person. So Alderman, Alderman Kennedy, let's remember that. You know, there comes a time when even the best politicians need to not talk and to listen and to learn. And when you're with Beth, you know, what else, I mean, what else is there to say? I mean, you have to yield to superior beauty, youth and intellect. So I yield willingly, I have nineteen beautiful sisters. Well, Beth and Beth and Erica and Erica, this resolution, although it appears to be just a piece of paper, it is the highest honor that this board has to give. And what it does is that it cements in time some of your many contributions to our fair city. So a hundred, two hundred years from now when people research the city of St. Louis, they'll find some of your works and how it started here in the city of St. Louis. So when they think about Sister Strut years from now and the changes that it made in women and the awareness that it raised and the lives that it saved, they will know your contribution and how it started here with you and your team. So thank you so much for what you guys have done. Resolution. Alderman from the twenty-third, I'd like to approach the dais on resolution number two seventy-one. I recognize this young man coming in the dais. How you doing, Jack? How you doing?
I'm here on resolution, wherever the number's at, two seventy-one, to recognize Jack Poor. Jack Poor was recently installed as president of the Knights of Malta. It's a Roman Catholic American association and he was installed in New York and a lot of us know Archbishop Dalton, He- Dolan, I mean, and he actually got to sit up there with Archbishop Dolan. The Poor's run a lot of the, they run St. Louis parking, they do a lot of charitable events. I have Gary with me today to actually accept this resolution for his brother. His brother's past president of Downtown Partnership. He's just a lot of charitable events they do. The Knights of Malta does a lot of work with children that are sick in hospitals. So, I'm actually gonna have you come up and say a few words if you would.
I'm Jack's very much younger brother and so, when I did read the proclamation and I saw all the different activities and committees he's on, I'm gonna dock his pay. I don't think he works very much for me. But I just wanted to say, I know it's an honor for him and actually the last minute, there was a priest from New York who came in with the Knights of Malta and he had to meet him, so I'm filling in. But I know he would say that we've been involved with St. Louis our whole lives and it's really an honor that you had this proclamation and it's an honor to be a businessman in St. Louis. And I don't get this chance but I do wanna thank all of you for all the hard work that you do because we do appreciate it and St. Louis is a better place because of you. Thank you very much.
You know, Jack and Gary, they do a lot of great works throughout the city of St. Louis. Everybody knows them as the, you know, the parking guys but they're on committees all throughout the city of St. Louis and they really give back to our community in a big way. And I think this is a great honor for Jack. Gary called and let us know about it and I can't thank you guys enough for all that you do on behalf of the residents of the city of St. Louis. A note, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you have? Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to ask if we could pass this in bank?
Hearing no objection. It's been a motion to pass this in banks, been a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change for resolution number two seventy-one, make it in bank.
So noted.
And I too just wanna, you know, commend both Jack and Gary on their work here in the St. Louis city area. They've both been, you know, personal friends of my family and in particular my grandfather and my extended family, the Daras, for decades now. And so, I just, I realize all of the really fabulous things that you all have done throughout our community and really appreciate, you know, your support and friendship as well. Thank you.
Alderman from the eleventh?
Mr. President, I had the privilege of serving in the Missouri General Assembly with Jack Poor. I don't think there's a finer person, period. He was one of my few colleagues that had a limousine service in Jefferson City which tells you something. He represented the little town of Ladoo in the Missouri General Assembly. A wonderful guy, wonderful parents, a wonderful family and have been, made so many ongoing contributions to our downtown St. Louis that we really owe them a debt of gratitude and Jack is truly deserving of this honor. He's extremely charitable as is his brother Gary and their entire family. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Gary, congratulations to you and Jack. Thanks for your service to this community. We met long ago when you served on the Central West End Association Board and you've done a lot for the Central West End neighborhood as well as the entire city. So, thanks and congratulations.
Alderman from the thirteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Gary, thank you for coming down today. Thank you as well as your brother Jack for all that you've done. I've served on boards with Jack and the archdiocesan boards and I know the kind of people you are, the kind of work that you've done. I thank you for everything you've given back to the community.
Alderman from the seventeenth?
Mr. President, I don't think I need to add anything beyond what it was saying other than I concur with it completely. Gary and Jack, great citizens of St. Louis, active in everything. You know, it's great to have folks like that. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the chamber. This is really, this is really good to have Jack's little brother here. You know, most people never, you had to really know Jack and spend time with him as we did in Jeff City and but our greatest experience and our greatest joy was me trying to keep up with that new Cadillac that he bought, running from St. Louis to Jeff City. He would run in record time. But even on the floor and in the real world, Jack was and is a unique person to be with. So I just want you to know that if you're gonna be just a fraction, just a slide of Jack, then you're gonna have a whole lot of people who will admire and love and care for you because Jack had that kind of influence in Jeff City. He was regular. He wasn't above the crowd, he was a part of the crowd. He was a part of the community and he made the system work. So I'm just happy that you took time to receive the resolution for him. He was really a great, a great person to work with all of the years he was in Jeff City. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Excuse me. Any further comments? Any further comments? Alderman from the fourth? Well, thanks again for coming out. We really appreciate what you guys have done and what you continue to do all throughout the city of St. Louis. That will return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the fifteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest Rachel Smith and Andrea Flunkert of the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Any further, Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Amory Ue, AT&amp;T, Ms. Culpepper from FIRE and also Ms. Culpepper from FAST and FIRE. Thank you.
Alderman from the sixteen?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my guest today Steve Spreck, who's a sixteenth ward resident and with the Communication Workers and Anthony Lancia, who's with AGC.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Since our colleague from the twenty-third ward had to step out, I'm going to introduce Celeste Reuters from the Realtors as my special guest this morning.
Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today Ronnie Hour, who's around here somewhere.
Alderman from the fourteenth?
I'd like to introduce Al Demetris, local fire, local seventy-three, firefighters local seventy-three, who also happens, though, local is located in my ward and I'd like to welcome him today and also Steve Spreck from the Communication Workers.
Any further announcements? Alderman from eighteen?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Mr. John Watson, who's chairman of the Academy Sherman Park Neighborhood and Leroy Grant, who's an eighteenth ward resident.
We also have with us a member, a former member of the Young Dems. Are you gonna do it? Alderman from the sixth, I'll yield to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to recognize as my special guest and also the guest of our president, Louis Reed, Martin Kossis, president of the sixth ward.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to introduce my special guest but he is on a pilgrimage to Salt Lake City, Utah, this being the birthday of his favorite entertainer, Donny Osmond.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the minutes of November eighteenth.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Reporter city officials?
Reporter city officials can be found in sections A, B and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
With dispensary line item seven- With dispensing line item 7, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counters? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counters? We dispense with line items 8 through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 231, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the comptroller to enter into and execute the First Amendment to Lambert Airport Ground Transportation Concession Agreement between City and Best Transportation, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 232, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the comptroller to enter into and execute to Lambert Airport Office Building Lease Agreement between the City and Transstate Holding, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 233, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Public Service and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing Public Works and Improvement Program at Lambert Airport, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 234, sponsored by Alderman Moore and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the 1800 Block of Cora as O.L. Shelton Way. Board Bill 235, sponsored by Alderman Moore and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the 4400 Block of Kennelley as Peggy Ryan Way. Board Bill 236, sponsored by Alderman Moore and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the 4800 Block of St. Louis Avenue as Reverend Al Manson Way. Board Bill 237, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the 1200 Block of Clarendon as Reverend John Watson Senior Way, Senior Avenue. Board Bill 238, sponsored by Alderman Troop and ordinance amending ordinance 67789 by modifying the terms of 20-year real estate tax abatement for 4229 Albert in the Euclid-Penrose-Aubert redevelopment area. Board Bill 239, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance pertaining to special use districts, establishing the Koski also business and industrial area. Board Bill 240, sponsored by Alderman Troop and ordinance pertaining to commercial trucks, truck tractors, tractors, and commercial tractor traffic, prohibiting such traffic on Union Boulevard from the north boundary of Interstate Highway 72, south boundary of West Florissant, exempting from said prohibition, emergency vehicles, including privately-owned tow trucks, when providing emergency service to non-commercial vehicles containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 241, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from J Industrial District to H Area Commercial District in the 5800 Highlands Plaza Drive and 1110 East Highlands Plaza Drive, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 242, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from B Two-Family-Dwelling District to C Multiple Family-Dwelling District for 5501 through 51 Enright and 5534 Clemmons, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 243, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance pertaining to Lafayette Square Historic District, containing a severability clause. That's the extent of first readings.
Reference to committee?
To the Transportation Committee, Board Bills 231, 232, and 233. To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 234, 235, 236, 237, and 240. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills 238, 239, 241, and 242. And to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 243. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 201, sponsored by Alderman Carter and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the mayor to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, to fund the 2011 Justice Assistance Grant Program, and containing an emergency clause. Following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill 69, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet, and ordinance authorizing the city by and through its Board of Public Service to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the commission to remove and replace the Jefferson Avenue Bridge over Interstate 64 without cost to the city. Board Bill 182, sponsored by Alderman, Alderman Roadie, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on Motard from Hickory to Rutgers, a portion of the 15-foot wide east, east-west alley in City Block 2181 South, beginning at Motard and extending westwardly to Point. Board Bill 220, sponsored by Alderman Roadie and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel in Children's Place from King's Highway eastwardly to Point in the city. Board Bill 227, sponsored by Alderman Troop and ordinance authorizing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at the northernmost east-west alley bounded by Penrose Park and Penrose Street at Euclid and the northernmost east-west alley bounded by Penrose Park and Penrose Street at Albert. That's the extent of our second readings.
Please place Board Bill 216, committee substitute on the regular perfection count. Perfection consent.
Board Bill 171, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment, authorizing directing the mayor to apply for a grant to enter into and execute an agreement with the Missouri Department of Economic Development for a grant to assist with the cost of repairs to homes in the city damaged by tornado and associated storms that occurred on December 31, 2010, hereafter referred to as the Lewis Place Tornado Damage Relief Project, appropriating the sum of $500,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 292, Board Bill 192, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance affirming that 1613 through 15 Carroll Street was blighted by ordinance 64821 as part of the near-southside redevelopment area, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 210 North Tucker, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 193, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Young, Roadie, Conway, Cruson, and Williamson, and ordinance dissolving Special Allocation Fund from, for the 1400 Washington redevelopment area, 3150 South Grand redevelopment area, 5819 Delmar redevelopment area, Shoto, Newstead, Newstead redevelopment area, and Lindell condominiums redevelopment area. Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, and redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and MX TIF Incorporated, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $8,500,000 plus issuance cost, maximum principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for a 600 Washington RPA-1 St. Louis component. Board Bill 212, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance repealing ordinance 68182, affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, and redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Lancaster Ventures LTD, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 213, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance repealing ordinance 6818A, recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $4,227,000 plus, plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for a chemical building redevelopment project, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 217, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, and redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and C9 TIF, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 218, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment, amending ordinance 67480 and 68324 relating to the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $4,600,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for a building nine component ballpark loft. Board Bill 196, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5439 Reverence Place, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 198, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2710 Russell, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 207, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2845 Victor, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 208, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2200 through 16 Washington, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 205, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3322 through 24 Cherokee, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 206, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3321 Cherokee, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 209, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3339 Missouri, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 187, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance dissolving Special Allocation Fund for the Skullin redevelopment project area, terminating the designation of a portion of the city as a redevelopment area. Board Bill 188, sponsored by Alderman Roadie and ordinance dissolving Special Allocation Funds for Station G redevelopment area, terminating the designation of certain respective portions of the city. Board Bill 195, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Roadie, Florida, and Howard, and ordinance recommended by the Parks and Environmental Committee, establishing the Clean Energy Development Board, authorizing the mayor to appoint the members of said Clean Energy Development Board. Board Bill 197, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 6925 Olitha, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 211, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 215, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from J Industrial District and K Unrestricted District to the J Industrial District only in City Block 936 for property of 2219 through 33 Delmar, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 219, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance dissolving the Special Allocation Fund for the I70 and Goodfellow area, at 4800 through 50 Goodfellow redevelopment area. Board Bill 221, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance to amend ordinance 68957, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $3,500,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for the North Broadway Carey redevelopment project, containing severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 44, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance repealing ordinance 67416, which authorizing a design build contract for an animal shelter and Section 2 of ordinance 65435, which sets forth the excess payment disposition of the Animal Protection Facility Restoration Fund, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 223, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Conway Troop, Flowers, Kennedy, and Arnold, Arnold Witz, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to submit all necessary action, all necessary applications, and to enter into agreements with the Missouri Foundation for Health or any agency for the St. Louis Healthy Corner Store Project, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, seconded by Alderman from 23rd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 216, committee substitute, sponsored by President Reed and ordinance authorizing the execution of a master redevelopment agreement by and among the city, Bottled District investors, and Northside Regeneration, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill Number 216, committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of Board Bill 216, committee substitute.
Moved by Alderman from 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. This is a very exciting project that's happening in the 5th Ward here in the city of St. Louis. It's a project that's projected to be $182.5 million over the life of the project, with an initial investment of $60 million the first couple of years. It's going to create anywhere from 500 to 750 new construction jobs, which we desperately need right now, and at the end of phase one, it should project to be 100-plus permanent jobs. So it's an exciting time for the city of St. Louis, and I'm excited about this project in the Bottled District.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 11th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I respectfully request a roll call on the perfecting motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further, Alderman from the 20th?
With the Alderman, yield?
Alderman from the 22nd, will you yield to the Alderman from the 20th?
Yes.
So, my understanding on this Alderman is that unless the development actually happens, there's no payout, well, actually, there's no payout ever on this project, right? What happens is the development has to occur, and as a result of that, the property continues to be taxed at pre-development value.
That's correct.
Okay. So, the developer has to put in the development dollars in order to get those dollars back on tax abatement. They continue to pay what they're currently paying on that property now.
Well, the property's not tax abated under the TIF, but the, the money that'll be generated from the real estate taxes would go toward paying the TIF note.
Right. But we're, the city's not losing any money that we would otherwise be getting as the property is currently situated.
Absolutely. It's a win-win for the city.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further? Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with the Alderman from the 22nd. This, this is a pretty exciting bill, and I think the opportunity cost is low, and I, I don't think I have any particular issues with, with this bill. But it's no secret that the developer that's designated in this bill, you know, is controlling a large portion of the city, and my concern is how this bill might interact, or this project might interact with the Northside project. And my concern specifically is that there's, there's real uncertainty about the financial situation of this developer, and it seems that there's going to be, you know, the developer's going to have to go to the bank, borrow more money to, to fund the beginning of this project, and we don't know if that's going to potentially delay the other project that we've been waiting so long for already. And, you know, I'd hate to see, I'd hate to see an 11-acre development hold up what is supposed to be, you know, up to a 1,500-acre development because of the fact that it's, you know, extremely difficult even for these big guys to, to borrow money right now. We know that a 1,500-acre development's going to require a lot of bank financing. So that's, those are my questions. You know, this bill, I think, is, is fine, and the opportunity cost is low. This is vacant land, but the opportunity cost of, of delaying the Northside project is extremely high. It's such a large area. It encompasses, you know, a large amount of owner-occupied homes, and those folks have been waiting for a long time to, to see what's going to happen to their neighborhoods. And, you know, maybe, maybe this'll accelerate that project, maybe if this is a successful project and the developer's able to earn a return on this investment and apply that return to the Northside project. I, I hope that's the case, but I think there's significant uncertainty on that point.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize, close.
Mr. President, I close. I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number 216, committee substitute. Been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop?
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderwoman Triplet?
Aye.
Alderwoman Young?
Aye.
Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Ortmann?
Aye.
Alderman Volmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Arnold Witz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida?
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Roadie?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Valmer, Alderman 20 aye votes, 3 no votes, 2 abstain.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 22nd.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Alderman from the 22nd, you're recognized.
Mr. President, members of board, I, I move to suspend the rules for the following board bills so they may be third read and placed on a consent calendar. And that will be Board Bill 171, 192, 191, 193, 202, 203, 212, 213, 217, 218, 196, 198, 207, 208, 205, 206, 209, 187, 188, 195 committee substitute, 197, 211, 215, 216 committee substitute, 219 committee substitute, 221 committee substitute, 44 committee substitute, and Board Bill 223.
It's been moved by Alderman from 22nd, by Alderman from the 22nd. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman True, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnold Witz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Arnold Witz, Alderman Cone. 24 aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 22nd and the aforementioned bills to the third reading consent count. Madam Clerk, please move Board Bill number 216 committee substitute to the regular third reading count.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills 199, 171, 192, 191, 193, 202, 203, 212, 213, 217, 218, 196, 198, 207, 208, 205, 206, 209, 187, 188, 195 committee substitute, 197, 211, 215, 216 committee substitute, I'm sorry. Remove 216 committee substitute, 219 committee substitute, 221 committee substitute, 44 committee substitute, and 223.
Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of board, I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 12th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman True, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnold Witz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman, Alderman, excuse me, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Valmer. 25 aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from 13th and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill 216 committee substitute sponsored by President Reed and ordinance authorizing the execution of a master redevelopment agreement by and among the city Bottled Investors, Bottled District Investors and Northside Regeneration and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from 22nd, you re, you recognize on the third reading and final passes of Board Bill number 2216.
Mr. President, members of board, I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill 216 committee substitute.
Move by Alderman from 22nd, second by Alderman from 20th. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass the aforementioned bill. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman True, Alderman Flowers, Alderman, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnold Witz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Young, Alderman 20 aye votes, 3 no votes, 2 abstain.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from 22nd and third read and finally pass Board Bill number 216 committee substitute.
That's the extent of third reading engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 199, 171, 192, 191, 193, 202, 203, 212, 213, 217, 218, 196, 198, 207, 208, 205, 206, 209, 187, 188, 195 committee substitute, 197, 211, 215, 216 committee substitute, 219 committee substitute, 221 committee substitute, 44 committee substitute, and 223.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to then that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 264 sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the 2012 Washington Place Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from 28th, you recognize on first reading resolution number 264.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 264.
Move by Alderman from the 28th, second by Alderman from 12th. Please proceed.
Resolution 264 adopts the budget for the Washington Place Special Business District for 2012.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution number 264. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Second? Pose, motion carries. Go ahead, Alderman, second one.
Resolution 265 sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the 2012 East Loop Parkview Gardens Special Business District Budget.
I was moving to the second one too quick. Alderman, you're recognized on the second one, Resolution number 265.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for unanimous consent.
It's been moved by Alderman from 28th. I entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from 12th. Alderman from 28th, please proceed.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 265, which is the budget for the East Loop Parkview Gardens Special Business District for 2012.
Move by Alderman from 28th, second by Alderman from 12th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 267 sponsored by Alderman Young Enterprise Zone for Steeple Bank and Trust at 501 North Broadway.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on Resolution number 267.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the request of a sponsor, I move that Resolution 267 be sent to the Hudson Committee.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 12th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign that board bill to Hudson.
So noted. Resolution 270 sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the 2012 Westminster Lake Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from 28th, you recognize on first reading Resolution number 270.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, Alderman, please proceed.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 270, which is the adoption of the 2012 budget for the Westminster Lake Special Business District.
Move by Alderman from 28th, second by Alderman from 29th. Any other discussion?
29.
Move, move and second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 274 sponsored by Alderman Flowers, Alderman Kennedy and Alderman Schmid, the Board of Alderman support House Resolution 1746, which would establish the Community Access Preservation Act and amend the Communications Act of 1934.
Alderman from the 2nd, you recognize on first reading of Resolution number 274.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we refer Resolution 274 to Public Utilities Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 2nd, second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution number 274 to Public Utilities.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading?
We have none.
Miss Lance, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
There are no meetings scheduled for next week. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to give another acknowledgement to the students at the Innovative Concept Academy last night. They had one of their programs recognizing achievement and it was just a thrill to see the family members there and the students and their participation. It shows that this program and a new way of educating children is absolutely working. I also wanted to say to Judge Jimmy Edwards and his staff and those who support that school and its concept, congratulations to receiving the Today Show charitable contribution and that will be delivered to them on this Tuesday coming up. So again, we will be getting some more national recognition for some things that we do right here in the city of St. Louis and I'm proud to say that that school is now in my ward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further, Alderman from 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of board, I'd like to let everyone know that the Neighborhood Outreach Center, which is located at 5325 Martin Luther King Drive, will be having a toy giveaway tomorrow and you have to register and you should call 314-361-7878 and ask for Linda. And again, that's tomorrow, Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Please call for registration 314-361-7878 and ask for Linda. Thank you.
Alderman from 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to welcome Sarah Gleason back to the office this week and wish her a happy and healthy 2012.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. There are several toy giveaways in the
in the fourth ward for the season. One especially, breakfast with Santa. I will be playing Santa Claus, so if you'd like to see me in a Santa Claus suit, you can come out and get you a toy yourself. But there are several, if you want to register, you can call me at four eight six, sixteen eighty-seven, or five three three, forty-one hundred, and get yourself registered to pick up some toys for your children. Also, on the thirty-first of December, Families Advocating Safe Streets twentieth annual New Year's Eve candlelight service to commemorate those who lost their lives to violence in two thousand and eleven. The names of the homicide victims from St. Louis City and County will be read. That's Saturday, December thirty-first, at four p.m., L. Bethel Church of God in Christ, forty twenty Page Boulevard, six three one one three, six three one oh eight. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the sixteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to thank the residents of St. Louis Hills who put on a fabulous lights display every Christmas. We are the home of Candy Cane Lane, which is sixty-five hundred block of Murdoch. We bring people from all over the region to see the lights. I invite everyone to come in. Please drive slow, and they raise money. They do fundraisers, so they are raising money for many charities every weekend. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from twenty-seven?
Also, want to thank all of those residents at the twenty-seventh ward and the second ward who've signed up for their annual basket. The week before Christmas, the cutoff date was last week. We did not lose the sign. We took it down. I think we reached that over three thousand mark in baskets we've been giving away, which is fantastic. Also, tonight at six p.m., we're implementing the other side of the twenty-seventh ward, which is Kachaktonites, which everybody calls Warner Park West and Warner Park East, to implement our mobile patrol program. I would ask just those in the communities of Warner Park West, Warner Park East, to come to five nine three nine Goodfellow. It starts at six p.m. and either show up or shut up. That's what I say, you know, as far as complaining. It's a great opportunity for you to participate and reduce crime in those areas. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from thirteen, you recognize on the motion, excuse.
The, I'd like, I move to excuse the Alderman from the seventh and eighth wards due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from thirteen, you recognize on the motion adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I adjourn, I'd like to tell the body here that Alderman Vaccaro had Gary Poore's parking ticket validated.
[laughing]
And Gary was all smiles. He said it's so rare that it happens to him. It's usually the other way around. So we made at least one guy happy.
Happy today.
At this meeting. Thank you. The, I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m., January sixth.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twentieth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned.